The meeting will come to order. Welcome to the 2024 Plymouth Town Meeting Number Two. Robert's Rules will be the rules of order for this meeting. Only legal voters of the town of Plymouth, Vermont who are present may speak or vote on articles at this meeting. All motions and remarks should be addressed to the moderator, that's me. Please stand to be recognized, state your name clearly, that mic is wireless and can be passed around. All motions must be made and seconded, a motion can be amended and that amendment amended once. Each person will get one chance to speak during any debate before anyone can speak a second time on this issue. I will allow one follow-up question in the case. Let's get on with the meeting. Warning: The legal voters of the town of Plymouth, Vermont, County of Windsor, State of Vermont, Town of Plymouth, County of Windsor, State of Vermont are hereby notified and warned that a petition has been filed by at least five percent of the registered voters of the Town of Plymouth, County of Windsor, State of Vermont to reconsider Article Six from the annual town meeting held on March 4th, 2024, that was done by a show of hands at that meeting. As a result, the town will hold a special meeting at the Plymouth Municipal Building at 68 Town Office Road, Plymouth, Vermont on Tuesday, May 21st, 2024, at 7 o'clock PM to revote Article Six. The meeting shall be conducted by the moderator, consistent with Robert's Rules of Order. The vote for reconsideration shall be controlled by a simple majority vote of the registered voters present at the meeting. Article Six stated the following. Article Six: To see if the legal voters of the Town of Plymouth will vote to exempt the property owned by Bethany Birch's camp located at 2610 Lines Hill Road, Parcel ID 167, from the educational portion of the property taxes for a period of five years commencing with the 2024 tax year. Dated at Plymouth, Vermont, this 15th day of April, 2024, J. Coleman, Town of Plymouth Select Board, J. Coleman Chairman, Richard Kaminsky, and Keith Capellini. Do we have a motion to put Article Six back on the table? Who makes the motion? Piper? Okay, and a second? We have a motion and a second, Article Six is back on the table, I just read it, is there any discussion? Does anyone want to speak about Article Six, either pro or con? Yes ma'am, in the back, rise and please come, either speak really loud or come and take the mic.
My name is Erin Hanrohan, and I don't know how many people in this room have kids, but my kids attend Bethany Birch's. And this winter, we had a really fabulous in-this-room Christmas party hosted by the fire department, which was really, really wonderful, many of us were here. It was unexpected, because in my experience in our town, it was the very first time we've done something for the kids of our town, we don't tend to do that a lot. It makes sense, we're not a big enough town to have a whole Parks and Rec department, so those of us who are parents spend a lot of time shuttling our kids to other towns, play baseball, soccer, go to the skate park in Lethlow. We don't even actually have a ball field in Plymouth that isn't the state park that you have to pay to get into. We have a great childcare center for little tiny kids, but for school-aged kids, there is nowhere in this town for them to have a sense of belonging except Bethany Birch's. And in the absence of a Parks and Rec department, which costs a ton of money, I would argue that that is the role this camp plays, and it's far cheaper than building a municipal park. If you don't have kids, you might not know this, but where do kids in our town trick or treat on Halloween? Bethany Birch's. Where do they learn to ice skate? Bethany Birch's. Where do they go tubing in the winter on Family Fun Day, swimming in the summer on Family Fun Day? And those are just the free things that the camp offers. So you might not be aware of everything this camp does for our town, but for the kids, it really is where they feel like they belong in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. So that was a pro, do we have a con, an opinion that's on the other side? Anyone? Okay, do we have anyone else who wants to express their opinion?
Yes, I say something I do at all meetings. Bethany Birch's does so good. People don't know or understand, we live across from them. They are good, they go out on a limb for kids, they take kids. I mean, you go on and on and on and on about Bethany Birch's. But I don't care, a non-parent, a parent, or grandparent, you cannot deny kids. And this issue should be about the kids and not eight dollars to send the Bethany Birch's. Before I get too wound up, that's all.
Piper? I'm gonna turn this mic around so when these people are talking, you can actually see their faces. So why don't you come up and take the mic? Oh, that was Bob Lambert. You don't know Bob Lambert? Stand up, Bob. That's Bob Lambert.
And I've been to forty-nine town meetings.
So I'm Pepper Temperman, and I sent out the mailing. And this is nothing against Bethany Birch's. As I said in the mailing, there are plenty of people in our town that are struggling just to pay their mortgages, their rent, their food, heating their house, buying medication, and I don't believe that we should vote to exempt Bethany Birch's for another five years. It's not eight dollars, a hundred thousand. This past tax year was eight dollars and ninety cents, a hundred thousand. And it's just gonna keep going up. And when the school gets built, it's gonna really go up, our school, our education tax. And it will get built at some point in the near future. Bethany Birch's has kids from many other towns around this area. Killington, Mendon, Redding, Bridgewater, Cavendish. Let them ask those towns, why should we have to subsidize kids from other towns? You know, other organizations ask for a small donation from the town, we're all happy to do that. And they ask other towns for donations. Bethany Birch's can do the same exact thing. Thank you.
Who's next? Yes, sir?
My name is Natalie Work, and I wanna say that I'm proud that our town supports nonprofits. And I guess I'm a little confused about why we're deciding to support some nonprofits and not others. So we, without having any discussion, and I think unanimously, just decided to donate thirteen thousand dollars to various nonprofits that aren't, many of which are not in Plymouth. I think it's twelve hundred dollars to the Fletcher Memorial Library, which is in Lethlow. Bethany Birch's is in our town, it is a nonprofit that is in our town. And so I, I'm hearing that people are really strapped for cash, I guess I don't understand why we're talking about this particular nonprofit, but people seem unconcerned about other nonprofits.
Any rebuttal from anywhere on that? Yes, sir?
I would submit, John Klansh, I would submit that that makes a little bit of sense, but the amount of the donation that we make to one nonprofit or another is decided by the township. The amount of a tax break is not decided directly by the township, and it's simply there. I don't understand why there's anybody who should be immune from paying taxes in Plymouth. And if we want to support them, we should support them. We should not, it's a very simple legal issue. They shouldn't be permitted not to pay taxes. We can support them otherwise.
Anyone else? Yes, ma'am? Come on up. State your name.
My name is Adria Khulshet. I'm a resident of this town for about thirty-five years. My, my child grew up in this town, and I was always very thankful for the time that he has spent in Bethany Birch's and the amount of activities that they live in. I think it would be short-sighted on us not to continue to do that. And I don't believe that that is such an extortive amount of money that we cannot make the effort. And in reference to why one nonprofit and not the other, I think that all deserve help. And if we're gonna cut one, we should cut all of them. And we said, we don't support anybody, we are searching that we cannot do it. So I really think that people should think with their heart a little bit and know the excellent work that these people are doing. And I think it's a matter of fairness. I have sent people for help that needed help to Bethany Birch's, they always got the help. And so, you know, think about it, thank you.
Yes, sir?
My name is Bruce Pauli. We've lived in town for about ten, eleven years now, and I met Brandon early on. And I will say that both Brandon and Amber are really good people, and they do a wonderful service with their camp, just as other camps do. Other camps in our area throughout the state offer scholarships to people who can't afford full tuition to a camp. They're not alone in that regard. They do other things that are good within the town, like any good people would do. I would like to see them pay their fair share of taxes first, and then go about doing all the good that they want to do. And if they find themselves short of cash, they should find other means of raising it. I know that they have a silent auction every year. There are quite a few people who just donate to the camp. And that's a good thing, and there's no reason to think that just because they do good and that they provide services and other things for children especially and adults in this town, why can't they do that and pay their fair share of taxes at the same time? I just don't get it, I don't understand the rationale for the exemption. It makes no sense, it's a lot of money. It's an awful lot of money to ask for. It comes, this past five years, first five, they came to just under a hundred thousand dollars for the five years. Now, there's other people in town that are hurting that could use a break on their taxes. Not just the camp. When, when they wanted that exemption the first time for five years, I felt at that time that perhaps they were having financial difficulties, and if they could get a break for five years, if they were able to get everything sorted out and be on an even heel from then on. And I was quite surprised when it came and asked for the same thing for another five years. Most people, if they're looking for a break, it's one time, it's a year, not five. So the whole thing makes no sense to me logically. It's just an emotional issue for a lot of people, and we've heard that. You know, where people feel strongly that the camp does so much good, they shouldn't have to pay their taxes. That doesn't make sense. They can pay their taxes and still do good. And if they don't have enough money, worst cases, they have to scale back a little bit. Who doesn't? Who hasn't scaled back a little bit in the face of financial difficulty? Or they can be creative and raise money. But to be exempt from the tax does not make sense.
Yes, sir?
I'm Scott Heffler. I live on Johnson Farm Road, I'm a neighbor of the camp. I've served for the camp for, I give a little bit of money each year to the camp. I give a little bit of time each year to the camp. It's funny that we're making what is probably a trivial problem about taxes. It's more than about, oh, sorry. It's more than about the services the camp offers to kids, which is super important. It's also about the land that the camp protects. The camp protects a piece of land that abuts Lines Hill Road and Pine Hill Road, and their other neighbors, Rick has a piece of land back there, and others. And that big piece of land between Lines Hill Road and the Kingdom Road, probably a lot of us have hunted on it, a lot of us have ridden our snow machines on it, a lot of us have hiked and biked in there. It's an important piece of land in Plymouth and in, well, I mean, the surrounding towns. Wildlife moves through there, lives there. And it's one way, this little, I mean, it's a little bit of money. I know it's a lot for some people, but it's not a big pile of money that protects this, helps protect, does a small part of protecting that important piece of land. So think of the kids like opposites, but also think of the land that's important.
Hi, I'm Steve Redonis. I know we've all talked about Bethany Birch's and what they do for kids and all that, but there was a night right across the street from Bethany Birch's where there was a fire. Bethany Birch's, out of the kindness of their heart, took that whole family in it and put them up in their camp. So it's not just about kids, they reach out to other causes for the community. Thank you.
My name is Sarah Haga, and I've lived in Plymouth since 2005. I also live on Johnson Farm Road. And because it's kind of emotional for me, I went ahead and wrote some things down, so forgive me for reading from my script here. I also just came from my daughter's spring concert, so I was a little bit late. This revote and the recent mailing that went out to urge us to deny Bethany Birch's tax exemption accuses BBC of failing to contribute their fair share to the community via tax payments. I object to the implication or accusation that Bethany Birch's is unfairly taking from this town. In fact, the camp is at the heart of this town, and we need to support the community organizations like Bethany Birch's that provide such a vital service to our children and families. Speaking as a parent, raising a family in a rural place has its advantages and disadvantages. My children, ages ten and fifteen, love the natural beauty of their backyard in our neighborhood, but living here can be isolating and during the recent flooding, even scary. Bethany Birch's has given my children a place to play, a place to gather, a place to feel safe, a place to get to know camp counselors who have mentored them in so many important ways. I am convinced that my children have learned about the value and importance of community from Bethany Birch's. Sure, they learned those values at school too, and I'm a teacher, but at camp, they see people of all ages and persuasions getting along and supporting one another. It's hard to put a price on that kind of learning, especially in the divisive political climate of these days. I fear that denying Bethany Birch's this tax exemption will threaten the ability of the camp to thrive and to continue to offer this experience to the most disadvantaged families. The camp has served not only as a community hub for families in our neighborhood, but also as a beloved destination and resource for families from other towns and states. I spoke to one of my high school students recently, who goes to the camp year after year as to his siblings, and he had a lot to say about how Bethany Birch's draws not only local families like his year after year, but also families from other states who want to experience the best of Vermont. That is good for our local economy. But just as importantly, it makes me and others feel good about continuing to live in a place with so much to share with others and where neighbors support one another. Bethany Birch's provides amazing summer experiences and meals to children from about forty families who otherwise would not be able to send their children to camp. So if you are inclined to vote no because an extra eight or sixteen or twenty-four dollars per year to help Bethany Birch's thrive is just too much of a sacrifice to your family, that is understandable. However, if you think a no vote is a vote for struggling families or for the health of this town, please reconsider your logic. Bethany Birch's adds tremendous value to this town, and I hope you agree that voting yes today helps us preserve an organization that serves and sustains this community in immeasurable ways. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Yes, ma'am, step right up here.
It's going to be smoke testing when you're there. I'm a mom. And last summer, and I don't know Brandon, I actually never met him, but last summer, he sheltered my kid in his camp. It was his first ever job, and I'm so grateful for that, that he offered that incredibly sheltered environment for kids who's never did anything, any work before. And we are so blessed that we have not one, but two camps, such a wonderful camp. But the Bethany Birch's are exceptional in the sense that it's the camp which has a heart, like as big as their parcel. And I honestly, I don't know what is gonna happen tonight, Brandon, but I really, I understand how difficult it is to develop a campground, a camp for kids, for disadvantaged kids, how difficult it is to be a nonprofit. I actually worked when I was a student in one of those camps. So regardless what's going to happen tonight, please, keep it strong. Please go on, do your best, we all, it's a privilege that we were able to be with you. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Can I clarify something?
Excuse me?
Am I able to speak if you give me permission?
If one person objects, you can't speak.
I object.
You have objections, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, that's the rules. At this point, I think we should call the question and vote on this article. Piper? Anyone else want a paper ballot? That's more than six, okay, we're gonna go to paper ballot. I now call on Karen Evans, Michelle Pingree, Jake. I need... Angela, Angela, okay. Two, do we have two more? Steve Redonis? Who else is on the Board of Civil Authority that I'm missing? Select Board? Michelle, you're volunteered. Okay, so... Are you, Angela?
Do you want to have them to check to make sure that they're the same people, do you have the list?
Yes.
Okay, so I'm gonna ask you to line up over here, okay? And we're gonna check your name and we're gonna give you a ballot. You're then gonna come over here and deposit the ballot and circle either yes or no. To be clear, yes in the affirmative means you want to exempt them from taxes, no in the negative means you don't, okay? After that, what's gonna happen is I have three teams of two of the Board of Civil Authority are gonna separately count the ballots to make sure we have a fair and honest count. Is that understood?
Yeah.
Let's go, Bibio!
What's the yes and no?
What?
Clarifying, yes and no.
Okay, yes means you want exemption, no means you don't.
Where are we going?
You see Angela right here in the pretty blue dress. We'd please, if everyone would please quiet down a little bit so the Board of Civil Authority can accurately count the votes. Good luck, Karen, it's not gonna happen.
Has everybody voted that wants to vote? Last call. Okay.
Quiet, please. I have a couple of announcements, and I'm gonna take this time to make these announcements so the folks who want to get out of here. First one is Kirk Turner's been fired chief for twenty-four years. On Wednesday, June 12th, from four to seven, there is a party for him, he's retiring. And the second one is the Strawberry Festival, Plymouth Strawberry Festival, Camp Plymouth State Park, Wednesday, June 19th, from five to seven-thirty, and I'll shut up.
And you're all invited!
By the way, this is the biggest turnout we had since Act 68.
What?
Said a little friend here, too.
Oh, man, yes, yes. More civil, I would say. Quiet in the room. We're going to count the votes. We're going to announce the vote. There were ninety-eight total votes counted. Fifty-three were in the affirmative. Forty-two were in the negative, and three were blank. Article Six has passed once again. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion?
Second? This meeting is adjourned.